The city of Boston zoning Board of Appeal hearing for September 12th, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the Board who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select Yes and you will, you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the irrelevant address is called upon or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Ms. Bede-Raza.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Is Mr. Shepherd with us?
Hi, don't believe, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm present.
Great, good morning. Before I turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge, I just wanted to make note that one of our board members needs to depart by about 2:20 PM, so we will become either a six or a five-member board, depending on whether Mr. Shepherd joins us. So we appreciate your assistance in moving the agenda along efficiently. I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start with the extensions requested at 9:30. I'll read the first two in together, they're relatively easy, and then we'll read the others separately. The first case, the first one is case BOA 1144121, the address of 405 Washington Street. Along with that, we'll consider case BOA 1215852 with the address of 892 Broadway. 405 Washington Street relief was originally granted on September 17th, 2021 and remains valid until September 17th of this year. The applicant has requested a one-year, this is the first request for a one-year extension until September 20th, until September 2024. Recommendation is that the Board grants, granted if appropriate to so. Any questions on that one?
Why don't you read them both into the record?
Okay, next, the next one for 892 East Broadway. Board originally granted relief, this one on September 3rd, 2021, so it remains valid until September 3rd, 2023. This is the applicant, this is also the applicant, the first request for a one-year extension until September 3rd, 2024, and basically the recommendation to the Board to connect them.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the extensions.
So? How about we just September 17, 2023, just so they're both the same? Does that work?
Madam Chair, you can make a motion to approve the date that they requested. I think they're, one, September, yeah.
Seventeen and September 30.
September 17th and the other September 3rd, yes.
All right, I see a nod from Mr. Valencia, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board, Attorney Feaster. Thank you as well, Attorney Derek Small.
Okay, excellent. Are you, Mr. Stenbridge?
We'll move on to the next case, which is BOA 897172 with the address of 509 East Fifth Street. Board originally granted this relief on June 14th of 2019. Relief has remained valid until September 19th of 2022. The Board granted the first extension of this relief until September 19th of this year. The applicant is now seeking a second extension for relief until September 19th of 2024. The recommendation is to approve the extension, unless anyone has any question.
Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing done, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant the extension till September 19th, 2024?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 91960 with the address being 2537 Plankford Street. Board originally granted relief for this, this case on June 14th, 2019. Granted the first extension of relief until June 14th of 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. The Board granted the second extension of this relief until September 19th, 2023. The applicant is now seeking a third extension of relief until September 19th, 2024. Recommendation is the Board grant the extension if appropriate and if there are any questions, all the matter.
Is the attorney present?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Good morning, my name is George Maransi. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. As Mr. Stenbridge noted, this was originally approved by this Board in 2019. My clients did not own the project at this time. This was an Article 80 large project. The 120 Go Street address is a companion matter with this. My clients subsequently purchased the project, had to go back to the BPDA and went through a notice of project change process. The BPDA granted the project change, including the new ownership component, on October 13th of 2022. Since that time, we have completed an affordable housing agreement, affordable housing rental agreement in restrictions, and a community benefits cooperation agreement. The BPDA on November 17th issued a determination waiting further review and issued a partial certificate of compliance on June 6th of 2023. Considering all of the procedural matters we had to go through with the BPDA, my clients would appreciate a one-year extension in both this and when it's written into the record, the next matter.
Great, Mr. Stenbridge, can you read the second case into the matter, into the record as well?
The companion case that Ms. Maransi is referring to is BOA 919610 with the address of 120 Go Street. The same matter, the same timeframe here. The same, it's the same timeframe as the previous one, this is mentioned for 25.
Any questions, that's why, any questions? If not, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to grant the extension until September 19th, 2024.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 878714 with the address of 72 Dresser Street. Board originally granted relief for this on June 14th, 2019 and granted the first extension of relief until June 14th of 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. The Board granted the second extension of this relief until September 19th, 2023. The applicant is now seeking a third extension of relief until September 19th, 2024. It's recommended that the Board grant the extension, unless anyone has any questions.
Is the applicant on?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Attorney Matt Eccle with Fletcher Tilton.
Any questions for Ms. Dargo? Hearing done, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension until September 19th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Did Chair also vote yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next, we have case BOA 928836 with the address of 28 Monument Square. Board originally granted relief, this relief on September 20th of 2019 and granted the first extension of relief until September 20th, 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 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. The Board granted the second extension of this relief until September 20th, 2023. The applicant is now seeking a third extension of relief until September 2024. Would the applicant like to explain and/or are there any questions regarding this?
Is the applicant present?
Hi Jeff, is that you? I just sent a request, I'll meet you.
I am right here.
Any questions for Ms. Harris? Hearing done, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant the extension till September 2024.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
So as, as we move on to Board final arbiter, I just want to remind folks, we are, we are in fact a six-member board at this time and by 2:20, we will become a five-member board. So just as a heads up, thank you.
Moving on to Board final arbitration cases scheduled for 9:30. The first case we have is BOA 835348 with the address of 883 Hyde Park Avenue. It's the applicant and/or their representative present for this case.
Yes, we will.
Can you identify yourself and put your address into the record?
Sorry, Sean Burdy, representing 883 Hyde Park Ave, EVG Farms LLC.
Okay, walk us through your request, please.
We initially, this, this denial from ISD was given to someone who was no longer part of our team. We're looking to change the name in order to pull our long-form permit to the entity that holds the license for this address, which is a change of use that was granted by the Board two years ago.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
No questions, pretty straightforward.
Yep, hearing done, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion forward of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have case BOA 1132440 with the address of 133 Portland Street. The applicant and/or their representative present to explain this situation.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Derek Small, a business address of 51 Dobson Road. Today, we're here seeking to remove the proviso for hatched access to the roof. We met with the Inspection Services Department and they have determined that in order to issue a valid certificate of occupancy, we need to remove the proviso and proceed with the existing headhouse. We also met with the BPDA and they have signed off and agree with us with regard to the removal of the proviso and that's where we are today.
Okay, can you remind us the height and the, just the details of the project?
The, the, yeah, it was a seven-unit building with seven parking spaces and the height of the headhouse was approximately eight and a half feet.
And it's a three-story building or a four?
That's correct.
Any questions from the Board?
I do have questions. I think it's a four-story building, is that correct? I'm looking at it on Google, one, two, three, four, there's four stories. Right, okay, so do we have Jeff Hampton on the call?
Yes, Ms. Bede-Raza.
Excellent, so I just have a kind of more of a BPDA question regarding its position on headhouses in East Boston. Do you, can you just let us know what your position is?
No, no, we don't have a, we're still dealing with this on a case-by-case basis. I know with this one in particular, Attorney Small and myself had talked about, I know this would have been a building code issue with the headhouse because it's four stories and we actually signed off on the plan showing a headhouse.
Okay, right, because it provides, because that's why they went ahead and built it because the proviso did say to have a hatch, but I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're okay with this.
All right, that sounds good. And I noticed that the nearby properties, mostly they're larger, do have headhouses, but I just wanted to see if BPDA has kind of a position on East Boston with headhouses. Okay, so it's just a case-by-case basis. Thank you, I have no, I have no further question, I can put forward a motion.
Please do.
Okay, motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
There you go, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Next, we'll move on to rediscussion scheduled for 9:30 AM. We have case BOA 148.
Do you want to ask if anyone wants to do deferrals, Mr. Stenbridge?
Oh, okay, thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, could there be, since we are already into 9:30 timeframe, would there be any request for hearings for default, deferrals, withdrawals at probably 9:30 timeframe?
Six Brook Street, Madam Chair, sorry, Attorney Jeff Drago, you folks are still a six-member board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Six Brook Street, please, Mr. Secretary.
Which is good, for 11 AM.
We have that at 11 AM.
Oh, my apologies, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Sorry, we're gonna have to make you wait.
That's okay.
Anything else for the 9:30s? All right, Mr. Stenbridge.
Going back to the rediscussions scheduled now, that is BOA 1484677 with the address of 109 Rutherford Avenue. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to explain.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Megan King on behalf of the project at 109 Rutherford Avenue.
Okay, can you walk us through?
Yes, ma'am, so, starting with that first slide, just to kind of lay out the project for you, this is a proposal to erect an owner-occupied three-family home on a vacant lot in Charlestown that sits in a 3F 2000 zone. I represent the fourth generation to grow up in Charlestown and as our family grows and housing prices increase, this project represents an opportunity to keep that family in town. As we walk through the project, you'll see a significant amount of effort went into the detail because I will be the owner occupying that third floor. Having grown up in the neighborhood, it's important to me that this structure blends in in the community and is really satisfactory to the neighbors. To kind of lay out the project for you, there will be one apartment on each floor. Each apartment consists of 1434 square feet of living space with two bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms in each unit. So if we can go back up one slide just briefly, I want to hit on the refusal letter and the notices that I received for the requirement for variances. I'm seeing variances for insufficient off-street parking, insufficient lot area, building height excessive due to the roof hack, insufficient rear yard, and insufficient open space. So if we can go down to the next slide, I'll walk through these kind of briefly as they make sense. So, as you can see from the City of Boston zoning viewer, the parcel in question is zoned as a 3F 2000 lot. The lot size is approximately 270 square feet short of the 3,000 square feet required by the zoning code for a three-family home. However, the lot is actually a double lot and once housed two three-family houses similar to the three-family houses immediately to the right. You can see on the map that 109 Rutherford Avenue has a frontage of 39 feet while the neighboring three-family houses have a frontage of only 17 feet. In both instances, the lot depth is exactly the same. Where these structures immediately abutting the proposed project house three-family homes on lots that are half the size, it is reasonable to grade a variance for this proposed three-family structure. The current proposal also provides for only two bedrooms in each apartment. This consciously considers density and sets the FAR at 1.78, which is well below the maximum 2.0. So therefore, despite the 270 square foot shortage, the lot is sufficient size to house the proposed project and meets the general purpose of the zoning code without being injurious to the neighborhood. If we could go down one slide to the proposed survey. So looking at the proposed survey, as you can see from the survey, the structure sits directly between the existing structures on the right and the left with setbacks on either side that exceed the minimum side setbacks by the zoning code. To address the rear yard being insufficient, Article 62 Table C sets the rear yard at 20 feet for a setback just to address the BPDA recommendation listed in their letter that the setback was actually 30 feet. I believe that was made in error, so I just wanted to point that out. So this lot actually qualifies under Article 62 Section 30-10 as a shallow lot by five feet, which allows for a reduction in the rear setback by 30 inches, which actually requires a setback of 17 feet 6 inches. As you can see from the proposed plot plan, the rear setback actually sits at 18 feet 4 inches with eight feet of deck space and 10 feet of course on green space. Below the decks there sits a foundation which allows for a walkout basement. I believe that it's this foundation that is the, what necessitates the variance for an insufficient rear yard. If that is in fact the case, I've sought a little clarification and guidance on that and I've yet to receive it, but if that is in fact the case, I'm seeking relief for insufficient rear yard because the space below the deck would be otherwise unusable. So the extended foundation provides for a full-size door and the added safety of a walkout basement. These characteristics meet the general purpose of the zoning code and actually sits like and kind with the neighboring structures. If you look at that proposed plot plan, you can actually see that the rear setback exceeds that of the structure immediately to the right and definitely exceeds the setback of those structures to the left. So if we can move down to the next slide and then eventually to the, to the rear elevations, the next thing I would like to address is the variance required for open usable space. So while we're seeking relief for open usable space, the plan provides for a different, different types of open space that are absolutely like and kind with surrounding structures. Each of the three apartments will have access to both private and shared open space. The proposed plans provide for approximately 405 square feet of communal green space, also provide for additional private deck space off of each of the apartments. There's also a pres-. There's also a prescribed roof deck in the plans. While currently, the roof deck is listed as being accessible to the owner only. Actually, if we can scroll down to the rear elevations. I am certainly amenable to making that roof deck accessible to all three apartments. As it sits right now, the owner-occupied third floor absolutely meets the required 350 square feet per apartment for usable open space. The first and second floor without access to the roof deck come to approximately 315 square feet of open usable space. So, that is just 35 square feet short of the requirement. If that roof deck becomes accessible to all three apartments, the variance for the usable open space should not actually be necessary. I would also like to point out that the lot sits approximately 108 feet from a public park with a playground, tennis courts, and basketball courts. And just again, that the open space is like in kind with all the neighboring structures. There's an error. We could scroll down slightly. Keep going. There should be a parking slide. Oh, yeah, this is perfect, right here. Area context is great. So, there were a number of factors as I kind of addressed the need for a parking variance. There were a number of factors that contributed to the decision to maintain a full-size apartment on that first floor in lieu of parking. My architect and I felt that the installation of a garage door at the front of the structure was not in conformity with the adjoining streetscape. By maintaining living space on the first floor, the front facade more appropriately reflects the historical nature of the neighborhood, which you can see on that right-hand picture. The row houses that are immediately to the right do not have garage doors. By adding parking to the first floor, it would also force construction on a slab and remove valuable storage space in the basement for both mechanicals and other types of storage, including bike storage. Finally, the lot size and shape really limit the number of possible parking spaces. The lot is not wide enough to park more than one or two cars while still allowing for two means of egress and mechanicals. Any available off-street parking would also be limited by maintaining a curb cut. The current plans prescribe for the return of a curb cut that is in that space to the community and provide for additional on-street parking. If you can go down one slide. When it comes to the density on the street, I am seeking, oh, excuse me. The section of Rutherford Avenue between Devens and Union Street is actually a 60-foot-wide one-way street with parking on both sides. Despite the street being wider than surrounding streets, it's considerably thinner in density than the rest of the neighborhood. More than half of the south side of the street has no residents at all and is comprised of small vacant lots, a vacant home, and a repaired garage. The remaining portions of the south side of the street is occupied by elderly housing, many of them utilize the ride and do not own cars. Approximately half of the north side of the street is land owned by the side and rear of a church and does not have residential housing. Only one of the residential structures on the remaining half of the north side of the street offers off-street parking. As such, 109 Rutherford Avenue also consciously considers density and limits the number of cars that would be necessary by this three-family home. If I can go down one more slide. Also, the location of the home lends itself to different types of public transportation. There is the Bunker Hill Community College MBTA stop that is only .3 miles from the front door. The number 92 bus stops just around the corner, and the area is also serviced by Blue Bike and Zipcar. Zipcar has a location only .1 miles away at the Bunker Hill Mall. Ultimately, the city is in desperate need of housing. The lack of density on this street, the lack of density in the proposed new construction, and the readily available means of alternate transportation make this project ripe for a variance that results in adding additional housing without being injurious to this neighborhood. We can go back up to the elevation demonstrating the roof deck. As previously referenced, the plans provide for access to a roof deck. I am seeking relief for the excessive building height due to the height of the roof deck hatch. It is our understanding that the hatch is the sole cause of the height violation. The hatch is a daylighter model that sits horizontally from the roof line. This particular hatch was recommended by the builder because it provides the safest means of ingress and egress without necessitating a full headhouse. The top of the stairway headhouse is five feet above the roof line and 40 feet from the ground. It is five foot 7 inches from the front of the house and nine feet 5 inches from the right side of the house. The architect confirmed that the hatch height and distance from the front of the structure is in accordance with the requirements of Article 62, Section 25, allowing the Board of Appeals to grant permission for the stairway headhouse.
Ms. King, are you almost ready to wrap up?
I am, I am soon. I just hit my last point.
Okay, thank you.
My help and my architect are available for any questions.
Excellent. Could you address a couple of points that have come up from the city side, which are curb cut, since you won't have a parking spot, parking spaces, would you be amenable to be closing the curb cut? That's the first question. And then the second is a comment about AD compliance and that there currently is not an accessible entrance.
So, the, I'm absolutely amenable to the curb cut. The proposed plot plan should have demonstrated that, and I apologize for that mistake.
And the accessible unit, accessible entrance, sorry.
In terms of an accessible entrance, if you actually go back to the slide that says area context, which should be down slightly. If you look at the, oh, down, yep, right there. So, if you look at all of the houses on this street to the right, they're all elevated slightly that have basement access. So, in order to make the first-floor apartment and the basement area accessible, I would need to add an elevator. Given that it's just me trying to make this as affordable for myself and my family to live, it's certainly not a requirement of the fair housing.
It's not a requirement for three units, so that comment kind of went off-guard.
Yeah, it should only be a requirement for four or more.
Exactly.
Okay, opening it up to questions from the board. Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Marine with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. An abutment meeting was held for 109 Ruth of Edav on June 28th. It was well-attended. Residents had concerns with loss of parking in the design of the proposed building. This office has received eight letters in support and three in opposition. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you. Hi, Chappelle. See, your hand is right. So, you're looking to get testimony here? Chappelle, Karen.
Good morning, members of the board. Madam Chair, Elaine Duncan with Councilor Corvus's office. Our office received several letters of support, one about opposition, one letter of community opposition, and the council would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Karen?
Yes, hi. My name is Karen Hart, 101 Old Rutherford Ave. My concern is the parking. It's already very difficult to find parking on this street, and once the hockey rink opens, it's virtually impossible. So, adding three at a minimum cars to the street, probably more because people have more than one car, would be extreme problem for this street.
Thank you, Ms. Har.
Thanks. Who else? I think we got some, any other raised hands? Anyone else looking for?
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Capitol Sargent. I'm at 107, which is the lot directly, the house directly next to the lot for 109. And we submitted two from this household, two letters of opposition. This project, the way the proposal currently stands with the size of it, it would very negatively impact our building. Our windows would all be, the view would be ruined, the torches, all would be ruined. So, we have to direct neighbors who are strongly opposed to this proposal as it currently stands. Thank you.
Another hand just popped up. Kristen? Go ahead. Can you state your name and address and tell us if your group needs support or opposition? Hi, Kristen. You're unmuted. Christina, sorry, Christina. Okay, we can't hear you. I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, the BPDA had a recommendation, correct?
Yes, if Mr. Hampton would like to read that into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. To read the recommendation into the record, it was denial without, oh, I'm sorry, that was the wrong one. Denial without prejudice. Applicant should amend plans to minimize building size to mitigate the usable open space and rear yard violation, provide an accessible entrance to the first-floor unit, and accessible route to the shared storage area in the basement, and close the existing curb cut.
If I could, just really quickly, I wrote in that letter that there was a misreading of the table for the rear yard size. The letter indicated that a 30-foot setback was required, and it's actually a 20-foot setback.
That is true, but it doesn't change our recommendation.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would like to support this project, given that it's providing housing for the city that really needs it. It would keep the applicant and their family here. And in terms of the side yard, you know, it's meeting the requirement for side yard. So, with that, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with two proviso that BPDA, what BPDA did on review, paying special attention to the exterior to work with the row house typology. And the second is to close the existing curb cut.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck, Ms. King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Next, we'll move on to hearings scheduled for 9:30. First is case BOA 149 8769 with the address 38 Alston Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present to explain?
Yes, Jeremy Stivletta. I'm present.
Okay. Can you walk us through your request briefly?
Yes, absolutely. Hi, everyone. I'm Jeremy Stivletta. Good morning. I'm the owner, builder, and applicant of 38 Alston Street here in Charlestown. First, I just want to thank everybody for their time, for everyone being here. I'll try to make it quick. I know we have somewhat of a deadline before the board shrinks a little bit. So, I can't thank you enough for all being here for this moment. So, we bought this building. Just a quick backstory, we bought this building someone's back. And since buying it, we have gone through the foundation, you know, all the stone and brick foundation was really dilapidated to the extent that we had to completely underpin the whole structure and repair, actually completely replace a few of the walls in the foundation itself. The building was also leaning to the right about six inches, which I'm sure everyone can imagine isn't that safe. So, fortunately, we got an engineer and an architect, and we kind of worked with them to correct the lean of the building in the meantime in a safe and timely manner as well. Our director of butter on 40 Alston Street, they've graciously been allowing us to use the driveway, which you can kind of see in that picture right there with the car in it. They've been allowing us to use that as we've been working on the building, which has been extremely helpful. India Butter across the street has been allowing us to use the spot right in front of their house for the dumpster in the meantime, which has also been incredibly helpful. So, you know, we do thank the neighbors who have been helping us along with everyone in the rest of the street. We do understand construction isn't really an enjoyable process for neighbors. So, for the most part, we do appreciate everyone who's been working with us. Moving on, so, for our plans, so as you can see here, this is the building that we're working on, 38 Alston Street. If you want to scroll down to the next slide, should probably give some idea right there for the red clouds. So, the proposal we are seeking is essentially for a finished lower-level space as part of Unit 1, which you can see on the far-left side there. That space will include two bedrooms as part of Unit 1, and that will have window wells. And that will go up towards the second floor, which will be part of Unit 1. From there up, you have Unit 2, which will be a two-bedroom, and that is where they would hopefully have some private outdoor space via access of a side deck, which you can kind of see on that back top-left corner. Going up from there, you have Unit 3. Unit 3 will be similar, kind of a two-bed, more of like a one-plus. And they will have the same access to a side deck right off of their kitchen and access to an already-existing roof deck. If you scroll down a little bit further, I think we can probably see, let's keep going down. So, that right there is a lot of the demo and existing. As you can see, the building itself is a little bit choppy, and I think a lot of the work done there had probably been illegally, so, which we kind of found out as we did our demo. So, we kind of went through, demoed out through a lot of that. We actually demoed out all the existing floor decks in there too, basically the entire framing inside the structure. If we want to go down a little further on the next slide. Yep, this also outlines the circle, the cloud spaces showing basically, again, the finished lower level and the rear decks that we are looking to add to the structure itself here. And we can scroll down even a little bit further, just because I won't take up too much time giving insight on that. You can keep scrolling, please. This gives kind of a little bit of a 3D image of the building itself. So, you can see the side decks here. Those are kind of tucked into that little alcove structure of the building that's existing. And you can kind of get an idea where it would be for Units 2 and Unit 3 on the second and third floor. And then we can scroll down a little further. That's another image of the decks, and we can keep scrolling down. I think we might eventually just get to the framing plan and on it, which just shows how we're eventually planning on framing out. I think if we keep going down, window well and then framing here. So, yep, so this shows we actually, where I mentioned all the old framing, instead of sistering along to the existing framing, we're actually removing everything and installing I-joists, just a much safer product. And that does show a little bit of the framing plan for the decks there as well. And you can see the window well. On the far-left, you can see what's a window well structure, which would hopefully be part of the egress for the living space for the lower level. For plans-wise and work, that's basically it. You know, it came up in the community meeting that those in opposition of this were mostly concerned, I think, with the lack of privacy that the decks would add to their homes. And I know one of butter mentioned safety concerns, just with the building being so close and tight to their backyard where their daughter plays. A few noted wanting to make sure that any interior space was safe for any occupants that we were adding. Of course, you know, there will be, as far as window egress, and we are going to be doing a direct-line sprinkler to the building. So, in the event of any emergency, the building hopefully is meeting all fire and building codes as well. As for the safety concerns on the decks, one of the residents that mentioned about the concerns with his daughter, we did say that the decks are seven feet wide by about 14 feet long, and that we would be more than happy to remove about three feet or so off of that length of the deck just so that provides a little bit more separation from the back of the lot to his backyard. That should provide about, I think, almost four-and-a-half or five feet of separation. And I'd say, you know, we do understand the only item that we haven't really been able to try to compensate for would just be the aspect of privacy, which we do understand because of the decks. All in all, I, you know, I'm hopeful that the proposal we're putting forth is something that the board sees that doesn't really break from previously constructed items in the neighborhood as well as seeing it as something that's typical for these style buildings in Charlestown and maybe not necessarily something that would be considered controversial that we're seeking. I will say, living in the city, I do know, you know, we do all know that privacy is tough to come by, and it's tougher to lose, though we do understand that and how important outdoor space is as well. You know, so that's something that's super important to us, and especially with the aspect of having outdoor space for residents. We are pushing strongly to try to get this for the eventual people who will own these units. And just to lastly add, the decks that we are proposing, they don't go beyond the original setback of the building, and they don't go beyond the original side setback as well. They're kind of perfectly tucked into that alcove area, so they are kind of tucked within the existing envelope of the structure. They're kind of perfectly tucked into that alcove area, so they are kind of tucked within the existing envelope of the structure that's on the lot. Um, I guess that's kind of it. I hope, hopefully I didn't ramble too much, uh, here, but...
Will this be owner occupied or rentals?
Uh, these will be owner occupied.
Okay. Uh, questions from the board?
The, the only question I have is for Jeff Hampton, who BPDA, BPDA mentioned, um, design review, which, um, it seems like the project is, um, minor in terms of just really adding the side decks. Seems like everything is pretty within the footprint.
Yeah, we're looking at permeable spaces, uh, surface area.
Is that the design review and...
Yes, ma'am, yep.
Thanks.
Okay, other questions from the board? Can we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, and a butter's meeting was held for thirty-eight Alston on August eighth. Uh, it was well-attended. Residents had concerns with the size of the proposed project, privacy, and the work being done on the current building. ISD did go by, I think, about three times, um, and said the work being done currently is within the scope of what they're allowed to do. Um, this office has received six letters in support and eight in opposition. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Okay, a few other hands raised. Uh, Jack Colligan?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Elaine Donovan with Councilor Colletta's office. Our office has received only letters of opposition, and the council would like to go on record as opposed at this time. Thank you.
Jack?
The opportunity to speak in opposition to this, uh, thirty-eight Alston Street appeal. I am the director butter that Jeremy referenced, uh, in his testimony. I live at thirty-three Cook Street. Uh, our home was built in eighteen fifty, and thirty-eight Alston backs directly onto my property, so we share, our entire rear lot line is shared. Uh, while I appreciate the outside investment into the Charlestown community from real estate developers like Mr. Steve Letta, the requested exemption, and really specifically the rear-facing decks is extremely problematic for my family and also for many other members of the community who wrote letters and took time away from work today to speak in opposition. Uh, the, uh, the testimony of Mr. Stivletta highlights the importance of outdoor space. Um, I think an important detail that was excluded from testimony was the existence of an interior shared stairwell, uh, that, that was already in the building prior to Mr. Stivletta purchasing the building. Uh, that shared stairwell, like many, uh, multifamily unit homes in, in Boston and in Charlestown, granted access to the shared roof decks for all, uh, three units. The decision to remove the stairwell, uh, is one that is reasonable in my view, as it's personally my view that Mr. Steve Letta can, um, seek to use whatever existing footprint, uh, to his development plans. Uh, however, to state that we need to add to rear-facing decks that are approximately a hundred square feet in the, um, in the proposed plan, um, is, uh, is, is, is completely over the top and invasive to not only my property, but, uh, the other abutters at thirty-five Cook Street, who wrote letters in opposition, as well as Jeanette Prendible, who, uh, hopefully we'll hear from shortly, the owner of thirty-one Cook Street, uh, and the lot at thirty-six, uh, Alston. Um, I submitted two photos, uh, Madam Chair, if I may, I submitted two...
Oh, let me, sorry, who's unmuted? Go ahead, Jack, do you want me to keep going, ma'am?
Sorry, just my last, I'll wrap up. Um, in addition to safety concerns, uh, from, from falling objects, we have fire risk concerns due to illegal use of gas grill usage, loss of privacy, noise, uh, and of course, property value as this fundamentally changes the, the profile of, uh, of our homes. I submitted for area context, uh, photos that show that these decks end two feet from my yard and only twenty feet from my daughter's bedroom and our bathroom, and I would request that those photos, uh, be shared on the screen so that the board can have the full...
We cannot share, if they were, if they were emailed into, to the ZBDA input, we received it. Thank you. Uh, next, please. Thank you, uh, go to Jen. And please add new information.
Yes, hi, it's Jen Hurley. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm at thirty-one Alston Street, I'm actually home today. Is there a way that you can show my video screen so I can show you exactly what's going on over here today?
We can't, we can't share screen, ma'am.
You hear them, they're chucking wood out of the second-floor window onto the sidewalk. This is exactly an example of the type of neighbor that we have been dealing with in their attempts to remediate this home. Um, so I just, I wish I could show it to you, um, but obviously, um, the way that this has been handled, the fire department out here with a big giant red X due to the unsafety of the property, it's really just not when an outside developer comes in and does this in our neighborhood, it's very unfortunate. The other things, I'm going to defer to Jack and Jeanette and, and thirty-five, as those are the people that are directly impacted by those side decks, which only face Jeanette and his property. It's not like they face anything that isn't, um, private. Um, the other thing, uh, talking about, uh, traffic density, we on Alston Street are a one-sided street. Since I moved here in two thousand and two, my husband and I have described it as the wall of cars. There is literally almost never a parking spot. And so to add, they're adding, they're asking for existing space as well per square footage. Um, to add those additional vehicles is really something that needs to be considered in connection with the privacy aspect. And I would, they, you know, they did this and they didn't have the proper permits, and now they're asking for this, they should have done it before they started building, and I have to respectfully request that these zoning variances be denied.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Thank you. Okay, and Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I believe, uh, Jeanette Prendible is on the line and, and would like to speak, and as she's directly a butter in this property as well, um, I would ask that she be unmuted.
She needs to raise her hand. Has she done so?
She, she did, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jeanette.
Mammy?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, um, yes, I am a, a butter right beside him, and, uh, I had met Jeremy when he first came out here, and of course, you know, we really, it's nice to have someone that wants to repair and make that look really nice. We're, we're not against that. It's all of a sudden, I told him when I first met him, he talked about decks on the side, and I said, look, I said, I, I don't agree with that. So I didn't get in a butter letter when we were discussing it, and I felt...
Can you focus on your points of opposition?
Okay, the, the decks are huge. They look into my house. I have a minor child here, they're a girl, that, you know, it's very uncomfortable. We have to keep our blinds down, our shades down, and, and this here, they're, they're only so many feet away. And it's, it's terrifying to know that you can't move around. They sound like they're in your house. Um, I just feel that he didn't want to work with us to even make the deck smaller or keep the pub at the roof deck that everyone else used. Um, and, and I just feel that he's overstepping his bounds. He didn't want to...
Thank you, ma'am, we understood.
Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to address the, uh, barely it's the deck issue? Uh, and you mentioned potentially shrinking your decks. Can you comment?
Uh, I, yes, um, we would be happy to shrink the, the length of them. Um, I, I think the, the appeal we're seeking is for the rear yard insufficient, because they do come with, and I think, uh, it might be twenty feet, uh, is what zoning would allow. Uh, we have no problem shrinking them in. Um, and I think I mentioned, you know, the decks are seven by fourteen, they're fourteen feet long. Um, you know, I'm happily chopping off three feet of that as long as, I don't think it interferes with the door, so I think they'd end up being seven by eleven, we could go seven by ten, I'm, I'm completely open to doing that. I think I hadn't mentioned that before.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of, um, BP, um, motion to approve with two proviso. The first one being BPDA Design Review with special attention to be given to increasing permeable surface area on the site, and, uh, size of, and to look at the size of the deck with potential screening, and the second being that we don't legal relief.
So just to be clear, you're leaving it to the BPDA's discretion on the size of the deck? Or are you going to put a proviso on the size of the deck?
No, I'm leaving it to the discretion of the BPDA to look at the sizing of the deck with potential screening.
May I have a second?
One second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Uh, the chair votes yes, the motion carries. I hope the, I hope the applicant will work with his neighbors on the size of that deck. Thank you. Next.
Wonderful, thank you. Deck, is, next we have case BOA, one four four, three three, three nine, with the address of two twenty-eight to two thirty-Frent Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain?
And, uh, see a hand is raised. Are you here for this proposal? Hello? All right, and if you speak, we can't hear you. Is anyone else on? Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? A second, uh, okay, put your hand down. Now there's two hands. Mike? Mike?
Gary, Gavin McClechy, McClechy.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, um, uh, my name's Mike McKay, I'm the project architect. Uh, Gray McClechy is the, um, the owner and developer of the property, and I thought he was going to be, uh, be on, but, um, I'd just like to quickly, uh, present our project. Uh, we're proposing to demolish a two-story brick building adjacent to, uh, a new six-story, um, hotel, uh, at, um, two thirty-four, Front Street. Our proposal was to demolish that, and, um, if we go to the next slide, please. Uh, we're constructing a, um, a six-story, the ground floor would be, um, a small retail space and, um, with bike storage in the back, elevator. Um, the, the variances, uh, that we're seeking is, um, it's a special permit actually, is a conditional use for the number of units. Um, we're also in a, a, an SLR district, uh, we've addressed that, uh, by raising the first floor. Uh, we're at elevation nineteen now instead of eighteen, the base elevation is eighteen, the straw has been updated. Uh, if we go to the next slide. Typical floor plan, we are, um, six units, six individual units that, uh, with a balcony in the, in the back. We meet all other zoning requirements. Uh, the only, the only thing that we're, they're seeking is the, uh, conditional use. Uh, but this is a typical unit plan, uh, two-bedroom units, um, facing on Front Street is the living area. Uh, if we could go to the next slide, please. The, the next few are just the same units, um, we're also proposing a roof, uh, roof deck that, uh, will be common, um, to the, uh, to the residents, we're, um, we're within the height requirement, we're, uh, under eighty feet, um, again, matching the, the building next door. Next, please. Uh, this, uh, just a, the Front Street elevation, the sides are abutting properties, um, so they're, this, this one piece, where there's a three-story building next to us, but, but then, um, there'd be a curtain wall, um, open living area at the front. Uh, and, uh, again, the elevations we've raised to, uh, nineteen to, to meet the requirements of the SLR. Um, that's a, just a quick presentation, um, I know that, uh, Gray is probably not listening, but, um... No, I, I finally got on. Okay, there he is. Great, all right.
Anything you want to add before we open it up to questions?
No, Mike laid it out right, I just want to say that I had a re-intensive, um, neighborhood outreach, and we did talk to all the director butters at a neighborhood meeting, talked to the West End Civic Association and Downtown North Association, and the project was very well-received.
Just checking if Chris Seminelli's on, I think this is a G-Cod. Is it?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Seminelli, Boston Water Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
What is the parking situation for this, for this unit?
Well, there's no parking requirements, and we, we actually looked into parking, but the site is so narrow, um, it's only twenty-seven feet wide, uh, that we couldn't, we couldn't really make the parking work with accessibility and all the stair, staircases and egress and re, ingress, egress and ingress.
Okay, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Some mayor's office has deferred to the judgment of this board. Our office conducted a butter's meeting on March twenty-first. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the West End Civic Association, which issued a letter of non-opposition. Uh, we're unaware of any major concerns at this time, I'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Caleron from Council President Flynn's office. The council would like to go on recording support based on good community process, feedback from neighbors, abutters, and support letters from both the Downtown North Business Association and the West End Civic Association. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with the community on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
And I'm at the care panelists, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, Jay Walsh, Bob on the Bob side?
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jay Walsh, on behalf of the Downtown North Association. Uh, we'd like to be recorded in support of the project. Mr. McClechy presented his plans at a board meeting in August, and, uh, we are very enthusiastically supportive of the activation of this site on Front Street. As, as the parking goes, it's one of the most well-served, um, sections of the city for public transportation. So, thank you, uh, that parking was not an issue, um, at all, so thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Bob?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board, Bob Demico-BTD. Uh, I'm not opposed to the project, but I'd just suggest, um, that he come up with a, a plan to show how they'll be loading and unloading, and, uh, drop off and pickup of, for residents of the, of the, of the, of the building, and, uh, we'll be glad to work with him on that. So, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Additional raised hands. Okay, uh, with that, may I have a motion? Can you, can we include G-Cod in that motion too?
Yep, Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with four proviso. One, that it undergoes BPDA Design Review and, um, that it be designed within the historical context. Second, that it abides by the rules and regulations noted in Article twenty-five, Section five, under the Flood Hazard District section of the zoning code. Three, that it undergo BTD, BTD review, and lastly, that it also be reviewed by Boston Water and Sewer Commission due to its location within the conservation, groundwater conservation overlay district.
Okay, just to confirm, Javier, uh, is this the appropriate place to include an approval, uh, the G-Cod approval?
Uh, if they have the letters, I don't know if that's necessary.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just confirming, all right, may I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, four member hands, you just clarify, did you mean, uh, groundwater sewer or groundwater conservation trust or G-Cod? Just to clarify. For, for your last proviso, you said water and sewer, is that, did you mean that?
It was based on the BPDA that the plans be reviewed by Boston Water and Sewer Commission due to its location, and also potentially that its location's within the groundwater conservation overlay district. So that's what I picked up from BPDA.
Right, and then my question, Javier, was since, since the groundwater already looked at it, is, A, is that necessary, or B, should we be approving the G-Cod? That was why I asked for that clarification.
Yeah, I believe you guys... Yeah, I believe you guys approved the G-Cod, so if you wanted to keep that as the proviso, that's fine. So, I don't think it's necessary, but that was made on the motion, so we can keep it as is.
Okay, all right, next.
Next, we have case BOA 1478073 with the address of 526 East 7th Street. It's the applicant and the representative present to explain.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and board members. My name is Lauren Waronwich. I am the owner of 526 East 7th Street, number two, and I'm here representing myself and the other two owners of this building. We are 100% owner-occupied and longtime residents of South Boston. To quickly summarize our project, in 2021, we removed an existing roof deck to make repairs to our rubber roof, and last summer, we intended to replace our roof deck, which is when we found out that the prior roof deck had not been permitted. It existed prior to 2005, which is when I purchased my unit. And in addition, we have the support of the director butters at 524 and 528 East 7th Street. Anna White, our neighborhood liaison, can confirm that. They would be the ones directly affected by the insufficient side yard variance. This roof deck is the same size and in the same footprint as our prior roof deck, and we are only seeking to replace what previously existed.
Great. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted a butters meeting for 526 East 7th Street on July 9th, 2023. Three director butters attended, and they all expressed their support. ONS has also received two additional letters in support as well. We're unaware of any community concerns. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support as this is an existing roof deck and no installation of a new one with that one there, with one previously. He asks that the proponent be respectful to neighbors and that the Board and BPDA review the design accordingly. Thank you.
I'm Chair, members of the board, Paul Solins, with the House Michael Flaherty. Although there are Article 68 violations with this roof deck, it is a pre-existing roof deck. They're just replacing the one over there. That being said, and knowing no opposition, council will record the report.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Great. May I have a motion?
No, I'm sure we make a motion to approve of the project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snubridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1512482 with the address of 244 L Street. It's the applicant and the representative present to explain.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the project proponent, who is represented by Matt Brett of Homegrown Builders. Also with us is Christopher Vance, the project architect. This is a proposal to raise an existing single-family ranch-style house at the corner of L Street and Columbia Road in South Boston, across from the Curly Recreation Center. The zoning code refusal letter is before you, and I'll go through those items right up front. It is very minimal zoning relief necessary in this case. The first item is a conditional use permit for the provision under the South Boston zoning code that when you are demolishing an existing structure, the height of that structure is the presumptive height of the replacement structure, unless, excuse me, the board grants a conditional use permit to go higher. So the proposed building, as you'll see in the plans, is a three-story building, which is 36 feet in height and less than the height allowed in that sub-district, which is 40 feet. And that is one of the items to consider when granting a conditional use permit under that section of Article 68. The second item for relief is insufficient rear yard setback. This is a shallow corner lot, long in width but shallow in depth. 15 feet is required for the rear yard setback, and the new structure is proposed to be 10-foot setback in the rear yard. Location of all front entrances not facing front lot line was cited. The official address of this property is 244 L Street. But again, as you'll see on the plans and the site plan, it's a corner lot. So essentially, it has frontage on both L and Columbia Road. So there are three individual townhouse entrances on Columbia Road, and then on L Street, there's a separate entrance for four of the units. And lastly, this is fronting on Dade Boulevard, so it is within the Green Belt Protection Overlay District, which requires a conditional use permit in connection with the landscape plan which has been developed. On a prior refusal letter, ISD had cited the coastal flood resilience overlay district. However, on the subsequent submission of revised plans, ISD noted that CFROD is inapplicable for new buildings of less than 50,000 square feet. Nevertheless, as you'll see and you'll hear from the architect, the lower level of the building has been designed in full compliance with that and serves solely as the parking area for the residential structure up above. Next slide, please. That was just our submission letter with revised plans. There's the notation for no C-Fraud applicability. Here's the existing site plan. Again, it's a, you're probably familiar with the property if you've driven by it, because it's that one house that doesn't look like any other house. It's a 1952 ranch-style house that was built on this 10,000-square-foot lot for a disabled veteran who was returning to the neighborhood, and he resided there for many, 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 many years until his recent passing, at which time my client acquired the property. We already have a determination of no significance from the Boston Landmarks Commission under Article 85, giving us permission to raise the existing structure and utilize this very large 10,000-square-foot parcel at the corner of L and Columbia Road for the construction of seven new units of housing. Again, three townhouse-style fronting on Columbia Road and four in a building behind it, which is actually part of the same building. Next slide, please. So here is the arrangement of the site plan for the new structure. You'll see there's courtyard running down the middle, and Chris Vance will explain that in more detail, but it is one building with one common garage below grade for parking for 14 vehicles and seven units. Shown on the front on the left-hand side of the image is Columbia Road with a setback of 20 feet for each of the three front entrances, which corresponds to the alignment of the residences as you go down Columbia Road. That was important to maintaining the rhythm of Columbia Road with a nice, large setback and green front areas for each of the three townhouses. And then on L Street, utilization of the existing curb cut for the entrance to the underground parking garage and the entrance to that portion of the building, which has four units in the back part of the building, we'll call it. Next slide, please. Here is the below-grade parking area. Again, 14 parking spaces for seven units does exceed that which is required. 12 would be required by the code. But again, because designing the building to be fully compliant with the coastal flood resilience overlay district, there's nothing but basement space which exists anyway, because that's the footprint of the building. So we're able to utilize it for storage areas and the 14 parking spaces, which again was very important to the neighborhood. This is a tight area with very limited on-street parking. So each of the units and their larger units will have two parking spaces. With that, the next couple of slides are going to be the floor plans and the elevations of the building. I'll turn it over to our architect, Chris Vance, to explain the programming of the building. Chris.
Thank you, Mark. Can you guys hear me?
We can. If you could briefly walk us through that, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Chris Vance, Vance Architects, the project architect, business address of 254 Bay Road in South Hamilton, Mass. So as Mark quickly walked you through the lower level here, we do have a partially submerged parking garage where we are providing elevator access and two means of egress and stairwells. If we want to go to the next slide. So here, you're looking at the first-floor living space. To orient you quickly, Columbia Road on your right, we have three tri-level townhouse-style condos. We have living space on the first floor here, and they're kind of replicates of each other. On the left side of the site, which is separated by a courtyard, this courtyard provides private entrances for all the units at this first-floor living space. We have unit four and five, which is a one-level, two-bedroom, two-bath condo units. And you can see that the elevator services this floor with a common corridor accessing the courtyard. We're also providing an accessible ramp to the south side of the site, which you can see running along the building, so that we do provide accessible access to the courtyard, which gives you accessible access, not just by the elevator, by means of ramp to access all the units at the first-floor living space. Next plan, please. So here, we have the second floor. You can see this is the second level of the tri-level townhouse-style condos on the right side. Again, there's that separation between the two buildings, even though they're one structure and one building, but you'll see in the elevations the way that we designed it to help bring the massing down. And on the left side, you have a bi-level, unit six and seven, which are connected by an inner stair. So these are bi-level units. You have living space on this level with a bedroom. Want to go to the next floor plan? Here's the third floor, so this is the top level of both unit six and seven and also the tri-level townhouses. We provide large outdoor balconies along Columbia Road, which will give you visual access and views to Dorchester Bay and L Street Beach. And then on the left side with the two units, we provide outdoor balcony space, again, trying to provide each unit with as much outdoor space as possible. If you want to go to the next slide. Here's the roof plan. We do have a headhouse strictly for access for mechanical systems that will be on the roof. There are no proposed roof decks. Want to go to the next slide? Okay, here, this is the front elevation looking at 244 L Street. So as Mark had explained, we do have a curb cut that is reduced in size from the existing curb cut that was accessing the ranch originally. So here, we have a 10-foot curb cut that will go down to the below-grade parking that's on the left side of the structure. And the way that we took the design approach is we studied the typology of the surrounding neighborhoods, and what we discovered is that there is actually a bunch of different typologies. You have things from two-and-a-half-story gable-roofed with stacked projected porches. We had traditional triple-decker units with flat roofs. And we also had hip roofs with dormers. So there was a ton of typologies right at this intersection, so there wasn't a strong architecture type that necessarily informed our decision when coming to the final design. So what we did is we wanted to take that massing and keep it similar in proportion to the surrounding neighborhood buildings. So instead of having one large structure, we broke it up into two segments, which you can see here on the L Street elevation, and we created a courtyard that divides the two structures, so that you have visual sightlines through the property, and it brings that scale down. And we also took some of the scales of the adjacent properties along L Street and used that as our element for designing the buildings. We also used the mansard roof, so even though it's a three-story building built up on a brick podium, it looks more like a two-and-a-half-story structure. So that mansard roof helps really break down that scale and keep it appropriate to the neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So this is the side elevation between the adjacent property on L Street to the left of us. We do have a egress stair here. Next slide, please. Here, we're looking at the rear elevation, so this is adjacent to our Columbia Road neighbor. And you can see how we stepped back the massing as we work our way up Columbia Road. And again, we provided the stacked porches on the rear to give as much outdoor space for each unit. And you can also see the ramp here that serves the courtyard. Next slide, please. Oh, I think you skipped one elevation there. Yeah, thank you. So this is our elevation along Columbia Road. Again, the flat elevation doesn't quite show you, but as we work our way down the tri-level townhouse-style condos, we stepped the elevation back to keep that 20-foot setback to really provide as much green space along Columbia Road. The elevation doesn't show it here, but we do, in our proposed landscape plan, have a wrought iron fence that wraps around the property that ties into the adjacent property on Columbia Road at 1652. We also have a lot of outdoor vegetation that we're incorporating into the design. We actually exceed our usable open space. And again, you can see that we are at, raised the first-floor level to meet with the C-Fraud requirements and with this brick podium.
How many slides do you have left? Can we pause here and ask the board if they have questions?
The rest is a section, yeah, so we can...
So why don't we pause here?
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. So if someone lives in the townhouse units and parks in the garage, how do they access their unit?
Yeah, so they could take the elevator up through that common corridor, or they could take one of the egress stairs up into the courtyard. If you go back to the first-floor plan, you can...
You're on mute, Katie.
So would the elevator take them to the other side, though, the units on the left?
The elevator, yeah, the elevator takes them through that courtyard, that common courtyard to each of their units.
I see.
Yeah, and there's also a stair that you see on the L Street side that comes up from the parking garage. So if they want to take the stairs up to the courtyard, then they have doors that unit one, two, and three are off the courtyard.
Okay, and then a question on the trash. Would these residents be expected to wheel those barrels out onto the street, or would there be private trash pickup?
I'd probably have to leave that question to the applicant, but most likely, it would be a service that would have a common dumpster that would come out to the street for pickup.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Any other questions from the board?
That was actually a really good question, Katie, because, you know, just my comment would be that your courtyard is not really a courtyard, like, realistically, it's just an open-air alleyway. And so my concern is that, or I would recommend that you actually design it as such, so it's kind of safe for the residents. It's nice that all the units spill out to that common, open-air alley. So to ensure that there's no trash that is out on that alleyway, you might want to design it in terms of lights, you know, in that space. You have seating area along those walls and potentially a security gate. You don't have unwanted visitors in that alley. But you definitely would have to design a space for your dumpster in the complex.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, we do have a landscape plan that we developed where the courtyard is built out with benches and vegetation, so it's a warm and inviting space.
Yep, okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, just to build on those comments, thank you, Hanzi. I'm also, kind of what I was trying to get at, too, is the visitability of the units one through three facing Columbia Road. If, you know, someone were accessing from the garage and wanted to visit those units, how would they get there? So I think also there's an opportunity with the courtyard to be a little more inviting and pleasant and easy to use. So those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you both. With that, may I have a public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted two meetings for 244 L Street, the first being on May 31st, 2023, and the second was held on July 26th, 2023. Around 30 butters attended the first meeting and around a dozen the second one. The proponent listened to community feedback and reduced the number of units... and reduced the number of units in the project and worked directly with two of others to alleviate their concerns. The neighborhood is very supportive of the parking ratio as it stands, with seven units and 14 spots. Concerns were raised about the general safety of L Street and the additional danger of new cars entering and exiting the driveway. The City Point Neighborhood Association supports this project. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waite.
Good morning, Madam chair, members of the board. I'm Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process that resulted in good faith compromises with neighbors and abutters, including reduction of the size and density of the project, including a parking ratio of two cars per unit, increasing the setback on Columbia Road as well as changes to a design and package to outfit the character of the surrounding South Boston community. The proponent has also agreed to work closely with the abutters and the city on issues related to maintaining the trees surrounding the property. Please note Council President Flynn's support and that of neighbors and civic groups like the City Point Neighborhood Association is all based on these good faith compromises and the work that was done by the development team and the community over several months to get to this iteration of the project. Council President Flynn knows that there are strong feelings in the community attached to this property and believes that this team has done all that has been requested by the neighbors and civic groups to make this project as successful as possible. The councilor respectfully requests that the board, the BPD, BTD, and the city be mindful that this community support is all based on these compromises over several meetings and months on issues like the parking ratio and to please respect the time and effort neighbors have put into this iteration of the project and the quality of life issues they experience every day in their community. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the City Council at Lodge, Michael Flaherty. The council would go on record in support, echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn's office, as well as acknowledging that there are Article 68 violations here. However, there was a robust community process that resulted in what the council feels is a very good design of the building, as well as the council is very much in support of the parking ratio that has come along with the design process, as well as the community process in working with the abutters. Council would like to commend the development team on working with the abutters and ask that the design parking remain as is and is very much as good as ever. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and say that Caitlin Stapleton from Council Murphy's office. The applicant completed a thorough community process working with the abutters and the City Point Civic Association to arise a project plan for this location. The support from the neighbors is dependent on the two parking spots per unit. Because of this, Council Murphy would like to recommend a proviso of no BPD design review or review of... or BPD design review not to affect the onsite parking or the design because of this. Council Murphy would like to go on record in support.
Thanks, Bob, and then Luann.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I'm not opposed to the parking ratio, even though it is excessive, but I would like to request two things. One, whether space should be for handicap accessibility. And the other one, have an electric charging station in place, since that seems to be gaining in popularity. But I'm not opposed to the parking ratio. I just think that those issues should be addressed. Thank you.
Luann?
Yes, good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. My name is Luann O'Connor, president of the City Point Neighborhood Association. And we took a vote. The vote came back to support the project. Very, very much what closed that vote in support is the design of that project. So I would like for the board to please take into consideration that we approved the project based on the design. It fits into the neighborhood. It's not a nondescript box type of housing, which is not the housing that we like to see in City Point. The other thing is the parking ratio for two spots per unit, absolutely unheard of currently. And that is why this particular project has received so much support, is because of the design, the fitting in of the neighborhood, and the parking. So this particular developer did his research. He came out into the neighborhood with direct abutters, with the association. He really did his due diligence and came up with this design. So kudos to this developer for that and his architect. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed? We can't hear you just speaking.
Hello?
Oh, sorry, yeah, one second, go ahead, Ed. You're on mute, Ed, if you're trying to speak.
My name's Ted Johnson. I'm the owner of property at 1678 1680 Columbia Road, right next to the L Street property. My grandpa built this house in 1926, and I grew up there. I just wanted to say a couple of things. The fence that's on my driveway, I'm the owner of that fence, and I plan on replacing that fence with a blockchain, rubber fence. So I'll be doing that after the construction is done with the 244 L Street property. And I just want to make sure that the height is consistent with my house at 1678 1680 Columbia Road and the house at 238 L Street. I believe it is. I just want confirmation of that. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you. Mr. LaCast, do you want to just address that quick question before we proceed?
Right, yes, we'll certainly mind Mr. Johnson's fence and work with him in any way necessary to accomplish that. And the height is 36 feet, which is not only consistent with the height of the adjacent structures, but less than the maximum height of 40 feet allowed in the sub-district.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Yes. Again, I also want to applaud the developer and their design team for creating a robust public process and also their attorney. With that, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with provisos that, one, that of the 14 car parking spaces, that one be accessible, an accessible parking space, and that there would be also an electric charging station. The second is for there to be BPD design review paying special attention to the design of the inner open-air alleyway and that the projects comply with the Green Belt Protection Overlay District and the Coastal Flood Resilient Overlay District requirements.
May I have a second?
One second.
Ms. Snibbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, since we passed the 11:00 AM hour, I will begin, I will ask at this time if there are any requests for withdrawals from the 11 o'clock timeframe.
I think Mr. Drago had one, are you there?
No, Madam Chair, we are going forward with the case.
Okay. And so just as a reminder, we are currently a six-member board and will become a five-member board at about 2:20 PM. Mr. Snibbridge?
So with that, we will return. Next case in the 9:30, which is case BOA 1404028 with the address of 3 Juniper Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to apply.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Michael Chavez. I'm the architect and representative for the homeowner, Ms. Michelle Murray, who is also present. The proposed project is essentially the conversion of her attic. It's an owner-occupied, two-family home in Roxbury. She lives on the second floor, and she's converting her attic into an extended living area, mainly as a role for aging in place. And so the variances that are being requested, all of which are due to the fact that it's in existing condition. Off-street parking is not, you know, she's up on a clay-sown ledge there, so there's an off-street parking on her street. Lot frontage is insufficient and front yard is insufficient due to the size of her existing lot. And the floor-to-area ratio is the one thing that is really more impacted on this. The allowed FAR for the site is 0.8. The existing house, as it is, is 0.83. And with the additional living space in the attic, it goes to 1.0. And so what she is proposing to put in the attic, it does not change anything from the exterior. There are no new dormers being built, no new extensions of the house being included. Essentially, the space is open over the years since it's been built. People have, you know, various folks have been using it for various things. She'd like to formally convert that into that extended living area, where she will have a front entrance stair from the common hallway at the front of the house that can be accessed, again, from the front door. And then the rear stair takes it directly down into her unit on the second floor to connect directly into that space. And it'll just be a small, one-bedroom space, a kitchenette in there, laundry space and a bathroom. Again, for people who may want to have extended stays there with her family, friends, et cetera. You know, the roof will be brought up to energy code, insulated, you know, and all of that. And again, there's nothing that will be changed on the exterior portion of the house when it comes to the roof, the dormers, anything like that. The Highland Park Neighborhood Coalition approved the proposal. She went through the abutters meeting and the Neighborhood Association meetings and all approved. And that's about it.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions from the board?
What is the plan in case there is fire? Is this sprinklered?
It is not, no. Because it's an existing tube and it's considered an extended living area, this kind of falls within the same realm of it being a game room or additional bedrooms up there. So the fact that it still remains a two-family home keeps the house from requiring sprinklers.
Okay, so what's the emergency plan for the third-floor attic space?
So sure, so for the extended living area, we have one that leads directly to the common hallway, like the other two units do. And then technically, the rear stair that then exits down to her floor, that then the egress that's in her second-floor unit counts as the second means of egress on the backside of that attic space. So, you know, it's basically like having an upstairs bedrooms or anything like that. We'd have to go downstairs to then get out the front and back. So that would be the same case here, where she has one direct exit to the front, common stairwell, and then the back would be going downstairs into the unit, where she would then have back stairwell that's at the bottom of that stair that's in the rear there. There's another back common stairwell that takes you down to the rear yard.
Okay, so you're saying that you can exit through the second unit?
Correct.
So they'll have access for emergency?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks. No further questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Here, and then can I take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board to back information on the community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting in late June, June 29th, to be exact. And as you do not recall, any major concerns being voiced. And the applicant was in contact with Highland Park near the association, which is active for that area. I would defer to the board. Thank you.
You? Any other raised hands? Yep, Tony, you're going to give testimony here? Tony, it's a spot, and it's raised. You can admit your request on mute. You're looking to give testimony? If not, I have no additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll put forth a motion of approval.
Okay, I have a second?
Take one.
Mr. Snibbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
And board, maybe?
Next, we have case BOA 1446356 with the address of 22 to 24 Albion Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present to apply.
Yes, Firdan Woodworth, speaking.
Okay, can you walk us through your request?
Yes, the owner is in the process of repurposing the back wing of her Victorian in Hyde Park, in the process of which we discovered that the roof of that wing needs to be replaced. The second means of egress for the second-floor apartment is across that roof, producing there been a walkway. Our proposal is to replace the walkway in addition to the roof and create a deck for the use of the tenant. So as you can see, it's a large lot on Fairmount Hill. And there will be a headhouse rebuilt for access down to exterior stairs as the second means of egress. The deck will only partially be visible from adjacent properties. And I understand that the neighborhood is largely in support.
Okay, any questions from the board? And then I'm going to take public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Unfortunately, due to personnel changes, I don't have a lot of information on this particular case. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
Take one, take it.
Mr. Snibbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1416018 with the address of 1955 to 1975 Beacon Street. It's the applicant and/or their...
Thank you.
It's the applicant and/or their representative present to apply.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of HVD Massachusetts, Inc., that are known as Happy Valley. And I also have Michael Reardon, the co-CEO here as well, to answer any questions that the board may have. If we go to the next slide, please. Jessica, thank you.
So this is a proposed co-located both recreational and medical cannabis establishment at 1955 Beacon Street in Brighton. This is rendering of the exterior of the building. This particular site is located in a neighborhood shopping district in Cleveland Circle. It has great transportation and parking access. It's directly across from the Green Line, and this location houses 13 parking spaces on site. I just want to point out, back in April of 2021, the zoning board of Boston approved a similar location about 100 feet away at 1937 Beacon Street for Happy Valley. As we went through that, and we did receive support from the community and the BCB, as we went through, excuse me, that process, one of the overarching concerns we heard from the community was parking, since that location, which was the old Mary Ann's Bar, did not have parking on site. As we went through that process, the opportunity came out to change locations about 100 feet away and to, how is the dispensary if approved at 1955 Beacon Street? If we go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. So we did start the process over again, did go through the whole community process and did receive all the same support that we had before. Why this site is ideal is it's a freestanding building. It's a former Dunkin' Donuts site. As I mentioned, it has the 13 parking spaces on site, and it allows us to pull in off of an existing curb cut off of Cleveland Circle. And all of the loading and unloading of a product or cannabis can be done internally on our existing property as opposed to causing any traffic concerns that we heard from neighbors last time. So it is an ideal location, we feel. If you go to the next slide, please. This is the existing structure. So as you can see, this is the former Dunkin' Donuts site, and you can see the where the parking is allowed on the site plan. And so this building will remain. It would be all internal construction and also some exterior, obviously with signage and some building design, but the building itself will remain. The other building was going to have to come down and be raised. Next slide, please. And so this is just surrounding conditions. This is located within a commercial district and surrounded is labeled as zoned as neighborhood shopping. And so you can see the commercial activity. We're also directly across from the Green Line, making this great for other modes of transportation. If we could go to the next slide, please. That is the Green Line station that runs directly across from us, and you can see our building on the right hand side on Beacon Street. Next slide, please. And so I just labeled here some of the parking advantages of this location. So one, the on-site 13 parking spaces. There's also, to our count, 87 needed parking spots and along with two hour parking. And then the Green Line C Station and D Line run right there along with the MBTA bus route, bus number 51 and 86, which allows for all those different modes of transportation. Just to go over just a couple of items, the lot size is 7,069 square feet. The zoning variances that would be required is use regulation. So and it it does mention that we were triggered because we would be within a half mile of another location. That location is our own approved building at 1937 Beacon Street. We have not moved forward with the application, but it was approved. So the BCB did approve us for this new proposal a few months back. And so if we were to be approved by the zoning board, we would not act upon that other license. So that would be extinguished by the BCB, and that violation would be removed anyway. But now it does exist. It's also a conditional use because this isn't a commercial district, and we also have storage and use in the basement. If we go to the next slide, I can run through the the plans as well. So this this shows our site plan, and that shows where the current building exists. You can see where the arrows is. That comes off of Cleveland Circle, and you can see the 13 housing spots where those were were housed on site. Those are all existing. It also has an accessible spot as well. As we worked with the community, we agreed to put landscape all around the trim as well. And if we can go to the next slide. We get into the floor plans, and they're pretty standard. So in the basement, that would have our break room, management office, security office, vault, freezer, and mechanical area. And then on the first floor, you would have your vestibule, check-in, a private consultation area, showroom, sales counter, a bathroom, vault at the receiving floor. I just want to also point out that this building has a full security plan. We will have video surveillance on the exterior and interior of the building, motion detection, glass break detection, hold-up alarms with duress code, 24/7 monitoring by a third party and security professionals inside the building as well. The hours of operation proposed are 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I I just want to point out that, and I know he's in the attendees section, Madam Ambassador, Michael Moran, the state rep, I know will speak when the comments are. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I can pause now to answer any questions of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Let's get public testimony, including Mr. Moran, if he's available.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Austin-Brighton liaison here to testify to the community engagement process the applicant went through, which consisted of in a butters meeting on May 6th. At that meeting, individuals expressed concerns about security and parking, crime, proximity to the local park, the reservoir, O'Reilly Memorial, and pond and rink, and young people in the neighborhood in general. They also attended the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association monthly meeting of the Local Civic Association where they received the support. The BAI did send a letter of support that the board should have on file. We did also receive a number of letter of number of letters of opposition from Cleveland Circle addresses and business addresses, which we received nine letters of opposition. From Brighton, the larger Brighton neighborhood, we received four, and from letters with no addresses attached, we received seven. We're also aware that Boston College is in opposition. As previously stated, elected support includes the office of State Representative Moran. The office of Counselor Braden is in opposition to this project. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Sorry, I just had to jump in for one second. Was it stated that Counselor Braden wrote a letter of non-opposition?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, I did mean to say non-opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabella Dunst in the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We had originally supported the original proposal, which is about 100 feet away, and we voted to support this proposal because it does supply parking, and we think it's important to have a handicap space as they will be above the marijuana. It's important to have a handicap space. We also feel that it's important that the delivery is off the street where it would not be able in the other location. One of the things that they did agree, we would like BPDA landscape design review, is they did agree to do landscaping, even if they lose a parking spot to add.
Okay. Pedro, I'm sorry, Michael Burkett?
Hello. Hello. Thank you. My name is Mike Burkett. I'm counsel for the Hamilton Company, which through an affiliate owns and bought an office building located at 2001 Beacon Street. I've submitted correspondence dated September 1st to the board, and for reasons stated in that letter, Hamilton Company opposes this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Michael, hello, Evan?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Thank you for taking me my testimony. For the record, my name is Michael Moran. I am the state representative from the 18th Suffolk District in Austin-Brighton, and I've represented this community for 18 years in the legislature. I'm here to support the moving of the approval that was granted to Happy Valley in Mike Redden from 1937 Beacon Street to 1955, which is essentially 100 feet down the street. This community, this this particular community of Cleveland Circle has had a real upswing in in investment in the Cleveland Circle movie theater, which is now a hotel, and various other businesses along this this corridor have increased their capital investment in their properties with the with the city redoing Cassidy Player and the state putting a lot of money into the Chestnut Hill Reservoir. This really is a community that is on the move, and I believe that this particular location is much better than the 100 feet away for the reasons of parking and 13 spaces. But also, for those of you who are Boston College graduates, this is going to be right where the Mary Ann's was located. Not that I'm against those types of establishments, but I can tell you that that community was not in favor of that establishment being there. So getting rid of the Dunkin' Donuts and Mary Ann's and adding a heavily regulated and controlled marijuana facility, I think, is an absolute benefit to this community. I would just finally point out that when this question was on the ballot, the Cleveland Circle community voted over 90% in support of legalizing marijuana. So this type of industry is not something that this community at large doesn't support. So for all of those reasons, I just wanted to reiterate my support for this project, and hopefully the board, Madam Chairwoman and the members of the board, will kindly grant this move and support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. No additional raised hands. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Give me a second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members of the board.
Madam Chair, this time, jump ahead to the discussion for 11:30 this morning and ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from that timeframe?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, Attorney Richard Linds for 169 Maverick Street building code.
First case.
That would be case BOA 1475953 with the address of 169 Maverick Street.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we were before the board, I think, just last month. This is just building code only. The board has already approved the zoning for this matter. We are dealing with a an issue concerning some egress for the building. We believe we've addressed it with ISD. However, we're sort of in process of trying to get that that issue resolved. We may need the building code relief, so we would like to keep this on the docket. However, if we're able to resolve it, then I will certainly inform the board by letter that this matter can be dismissed. So we're asking just for a deferral perhaps till the end of October. Only November should be fine.
Have you?
Yeah, Madam Chair, October 31st would be available.
Perfect.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to defer until October 31st.
Give me a second.
Yes.
Again. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Barbaraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
If there are no further requests for withdrawal or deferral from 11:30, then you move on to the hearing schedule for 11:00 AM.
And just a quick reminder, sorry, just a quick reminder, we're a six-person board that will become a five-person board at 2:20. So please help us keep moving forward, Mr. Stenbridge.
And with that, we'll go to case BOA 1406273 with the address of 6 Brook Street. The applicant and the representative present?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street here on behalf of the applicants, Tom Walsh and Peter Ryan. And I also have Adam Glassman on the call as the architect for the project. If we could go to the slide deck, please, Madam Ambassador. Thank you. So this is a proposal at 6 Brook Street. This existing building that you're looking at is the rendering of the proposal, and that is to change the occupancy from three residential units with one retail space to six residential units and obviously keeping the retail space. And this will also include renovating the entire building, exterior and interior, and then adding both a rear addition and a top floor recessed unit. You can see that unit on the top of the building on the fourth level pulled back from the edge about five feet. If we go to the next slide, please. This particular project falls within the guidelines of Plan East Boston, and the BPDA did support us as a recommendation for approval. We are located, it's great for commuters, is directly across the street, falls along that Bremen Street Park corridor, is right across the street from Airport Station. And if you look at this slide, we would be infilling above the convenience store and then adding the top unit above that. The, if you go to the next slide, please. This is a view looking right on the corner of Bremen, and you can see the access right across the way to Bremen Street Park and Airport Station. You go to the next slide, please, Madam Chair, Madam Ambassador. And so now we get into the plans and elevation. So the proposed floor plan would be no use in the basement. This does fall under G-COD, and I know Mr. Semenelli received our information from Water &amp; Sewer No Harm Letter. The basement would be just storage and mechanical. The first floor would house the retail market, which is 817 square feet. Would also house Unit 1, which is a one bedroom. It's an existing unit. Second floor would house Unit 2, which also has an existing unit, and then Unit 3, the new unit that's a proposed two-bedroom at 836 square feet. As we go up to the third level, we have an existing one-bedroom and that Unit 5, which is the new unit, a two-bedroom at 836 square feet. And then the floor, fourth floor, is the new unit on the top, which is a three-bedroom at 998 square feet. The addition in the back would provide for new rear decks, and that would include on the second and third story addition. And if we look in this surrounding area, there are a number of, there's a number of precedent for four-story, 134 Chelsea Street, 166, 245, all within our immediate walking distance. And then this board approved a five-story building at 282 Bremen Street, varies from four to five, which is diagonal from from our property. And just to go over the zoning variances that are needed, this use, this is a 3F district, and we are providing six units with retail. So we would need a use variance. Our lot size would be under FAR. We are proposing 2.9. We're currently at 1.53. For height, we are proposing 43 feet, but we are recessed, as I had mentioned, in the front of the building. And at four stories and three stories would be allowed under the code. We're not changing anything in terms of front yard, side yard, or rear yard. They are pre-existing since we're not, we're not changing the contours of the front or sides of the building. We are not able to provide parking because there's no existing parking, and we are keeping the building. However, we are a one-minute walk to the airport station right across the way, which is great for commuters as well. And I did mention this triggered G-COD and IPod as well. I can pause to answer questions that the board may have.
Yes, Mr. Drago, a question on the retail space. So I know you said you're retaining it. It's retaining the space. It sounds like from feedback that you're not retaining the occupant. Can you speak to that?
So that's just not true, Madam Chair. My client and we are keeping the occupant. We've had no intention to remove them. The Delicious Market has been a great tenant and a longstanding presence in the community. The intention of the owners was to have a longer-term lease at below-market levels. So the lease that was presented and that he's paying now is well below or half below market, which we had agreed would continue for three years with an additional two-years option beyond that. So I think a lot of comments around that are rumors, I should say, because that's just simply not true, and we want to continue to work with that tenant. Obviously, during construction, we did mention there would be a period of time. We're trying to keep that to a minimum, only where it would affect above his location for framing, that we would need to just have everyone out of the that location for, you know, hopefully only a month or so. And we didn't express that, but the intention is to keep that tenant long-term.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, with that, can we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Um, our office conducted an abutters meeting on October twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two. There were twenty-two abutters who were present on the call. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in December of two thousand twenty-two and January of two thousand twenty-three. Madam Chair, as you touched upon, there's been a lot of concerns raised by the community for the potential gentrification, the potential loss of, uh, this retail space. Um, the Delicious Market, I guess, is, is well-loved in the community. Um, and neighbors and members of the Mutual Aid EASTY have written and called out in opposition, uh, out of fears that the app, that this business could be displaced. We understand that the applicant has been working with that business owner and has verbally committed to, uh, retain them, um, after the construction has been complete, or I think some members of the public, um, expressed concerns that there's no written agreement there. Um, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Raul Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant. Thank you.
I'll start with Hector and then go to Mutual Aid. Hector, can you briefly, once again, can you tell us briefly if you are in support or opposition? State your name and address.
Hello?
Hi.
Is there anyone that's gonna help him translate?
I didn't receive a request for translation, but I can get someone on the call shortly if needed.
And if you can't find a translator, there's two board members that speak Spanish that can translate here.
As long as you guys are willing and just pause them at your appropriate time, thank you. Please proceed, Mr. Martinez.
Hello? From the tienda, me mantengo yo, mantengo mi familia. Yo que voy a hacer con todo eso, lo que tengo en la tienda, yo quisiera un contrato razonable, de que podemos negociar con ellos, un contrato. Yo quería siquiera cinco años, cinco años renovables, ellos han dicho que no. Lo que me ofrecieron fue un contrato, le ofrecieron a mi abogado un contrato de tres años, dos años renovables, pero eso no es suficiente, porque al fin y al día tenemos que seguir otra vez en la lucha, mejor quisiera tres años. Acepto los tres años, tres años renovables y tres años adicionales para que aguanten siquiera nueve años, para poder entender, yo poder comprar más mercadería, poder mantenerlas empleadas, me mantengo yo, mantengo las empleadas, hay una comunidad y que haya más trabajo. Y asimismo podemos seguir trabajando, yo les pago la renta a ellos, claro, lo que al día que yo me han dicho, ellos no pueden decir que tenemos que pagar la renta. Entonces, por eso me voy a yo, necesitará que me den un contrato razonable, siquiera de, ellos no quieren cinco años porque me den tres y tres renovables y tres adicionales para completar siquiera nueve años. Eso es lo que yo le pido a ellos y les pido al abogado que hable con ellos y a la comunidad que me ayuden para no irme de aquí.
Okay, gracias. So in short, um, he basically said that, um, he would like to have a preferable five-year contract versus a three-year, and then, uh, and then a three-year, um, potential renewal. Um, that, uh, it would be favorable for him for five years because three years is just too short. Um, uh, and very difficult for him and his family. So I guess the question would be, um, is there a potential to extend from three years to five years?
I, I, I think, um, yes, thank you, um, Ms. Barazza. So we, we talked about, and I've only been, of course, I have to deal with his attorney directly. Um, we did send a proposal of, uh, in writing of three years plus an option for two additional years. So I think we, we would be perfectly comfortable at five years. I think what we were hearing was then it was more than five, you know, it would just, and it would be hard for financing, but I think we, we would be amenable, and I actually have, um, the owner who has, uh, reached out to him directly, Tom Walsh. Uh, Jessica, I'm sorry to, uh, ask again, but if you could, uh, elevate Tom to speak, just, um, because he's been actively involved with this as well.
Just a question, if it's five years, would you be open for a two-years negotiation?
I, I think, yes.
Five years, okay.
I, I, I just think if, if Tom could, um, also, if he is available.
Okay, and then I'll just let, um, señor Martinez? Me puedes oír?
Sí, la oigo.
Okay, eh, yo le comuniqué con, con el abogado lo que usted prefiere, y me contó que está disponible a darte un contrato por cinco años y de pronto dos años para negociar encima de los cinco años. ¿Usted estás bien con eso?
Eh, porque fíjese que cinco años y los dos negociables todavía no tenemos la pre, la aprobación de probabilidad que sí me quedo allí.
Sí, no, yo entiendo, pero, eh, yo creo que lo tengo que cortar, pero nada más le quiero decir que eso es lo que estamos hablando.
Ah, me gustaría, si tres o los cinco renovables.
Okay, tres o cinco renovables después de los cinco.
Si el cinco renovable.
Okay, yo creo que eso es para que usted y su abogado puedan negociar, pero yo no me voy a comunicar lo que estamos hablando ahora, okay. Um, so basically, his preference is, uh, five-year contract with a potential three-year or five-year negotiation, and I just basically said we're not in the business to be negotiating, but that I would communicate his preference. I think we're done with that.
Yes, and Ms. Barazza, we have really had a good communication with him, we, we wanna keep the tenant, he's been great. They've lowered his rent immediately below market and less.
Thank you. Can we keep going with, uh, public testimony?
Yeah.
Um, go to Leonard, Wilson, and then Mutual Aid. Uh, Leonard put his hand down, okay, Mutual Aid? I follow you?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Ada from Mutual Aid. I am in support of Hector's grocery store being left alone and for a year or so. Before that, I would like to comment on the project. I don't think these developers realize the headaches, the pain and suffering they have caused this community. Now we're talking about, aside from the project across to them, we are going to suffer more parking shortly. This community, uh, been there thirty years, and I'm speaking on behalf of all the already handicapped people that live in this community that have a hard time, I know neighbors who have to take a move to Boston because they wanna leave their car to make sure they have a space when they come back. It is impossible to find parking, never mind the airport, the Y, the library, the schools, and now all these, um, projects. We are never gonna have any space. It is a sad situation, and I just wanted to make that clear. On behalf of Hector, who is not a money-making business, he's a family man who barely makes money to support his kids, send his kid to college, he also provides a lot of services to the community, except especially the handicapped who cannot travel to Charles or other places that are very hard to get to. Um, we depend on his store to buy things that we daily need, uh, we need daily. Uh, he has even gone as far as taking people's grocery home because some of us cannot carry it. So I really support him staying there for at least nine to ten years, where we can find or help and relocate, uh, a place that is near this community, he has, is part of this community. We have seen his kids grow up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Share family moments and memories, and I really would like, um, for Mr. Hector to be allowed to stay.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, appreciate that, can we, are there other raise hands?
Yes, uh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Tony Blaze, I am the attorney, uh, assisting Mr. Martinez in the negotiations. My address is one eighty-three State Street, Boston Mall.
Can you pause, I'd, I'd like to hear from someone other than those associated with Mr. Martinez to make sure that we're just getting a better, a rounded picture.
Absolutely.
We'll come back to you at the end.
Leonard, are you looking to give testimony?
Yes, I am, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, well, to the board, or the chair's point, uh, I'm here with Hector inside, just for clarity, we're all here in our, in the Mutual Aid EASTY office. I'm also an East Boston neighbor, and I'm speaking in a proposition to the project as a means of supporting Hector, who doesn't feel like the project is offering him safety, and in addition to the fact that there are various zoning violations that are concerning for us, some of which Sid just, uh, mentioned. Um, my address is eight Orion Ave, um, apartment one in East Boston, I don't know, Sid, did you wanna say yours, by the way? No, Hector.
Chelsea Street.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I think, again, it should be pretty clear, we're here in support of Hector and the ability for the Delicious Market to remain there. We recognize what, um, Jeff and, and the development team is saying about a contract and that it offered been made, but it simply isn't sufficient for Hector. Um, and I think maybe one thing that just caught our eye that was a little concerning and perhaps indicative of the good faith or not, lack thereof, of the development team, was that in, in the first picture they showed, it, they had Delicious Market there, and in the second, it said East Boston Market, um, which was a little, just, you know, an observation at least. Um, I know the board also wants to hear about the zoning concerns, so, uh, on my end, uh, Sid already touched on the parking, and I'm equally as concerned about the parking, it's madness there, um, and it's insufficient what the project is proposing, and, um, you know, as the zoning code for East Boston states, uh, I don't have it word for word, but that new projects should fit the character of the neighborhood and also add to the well-being of the neighborhood, uh, anything that would lose a, a bodega, um, you like Hector's, that provides products that are important for the neighborhood in the community that are from their home country, would significantly, uh, add to them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm hearing some feedback, in any case, um.
Okay, I have no additional.
Thank you, so I think we understand parking issues and Mr. and, and Mr. Martinez's establishment, so, uh, if there's no other new, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, do you wanna respond to that, Mr. uh, Mr. Drago, before we move on?
Chair, I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt, Chair, could I ask one question about the language interpretation? Because both Hector and I had, um, requested a Spanish interpreter, and I know Ms. Barazza did the best she could to interpret for him, but, um, I think we were both hoping for, you know, professional interpretations that everything could get translated. So I don't know what the status is for, for the language justice piece.
I, Ms. Ms. Thomas would know whether that was requested or not.
Okay.
And where that stands.
Hello?
Okay.
Guys, Madam Chair, Tom Walsh here, could I, um, I'm the owner of the building, if I could just have a few words, it would be, uh,
If you are responding to those comments briefly, yes, please.
Yes, absolutely, um, firstly, uh, thanks for, um, thanks for giving me the space to, to chat here. Um, I've had, we've had, uh, a pretty great relationship with Hector over the last kind of two years since we've been involved with the project. Um, what I would say is Hector, absolute, uh, great businessman, great entrepreneur, um, he's done everything in favor of us, and we've tried as much as possible to do everything in favor for him, especially over the last couple of weeks. Um, we want Hector in, in, in our, um, in our retail unit, one hundred percent. We want him to feel comfortable, we understand the family ethos, we understand the culture that he brings to the area. It's, it's only an advantage to have him in place, there is no fears around having Hector in business in place. We're working with attorney, um, uh, with his attorney to put that down in, in writing. Uh, so that's, there's, there's no fears around that, we want Hector out of our, out of our.
Okay.
In terms of the, in terms of the parking, um, I would say that as a, as a, as a building owner and as a resident of East Boston, um, I'm, I'm kind of more in favor of, of less cars and less parking, and I think the location of this business, as, as Jeff has alluded to it, uh, showcases that it, it is really a transit-orientated area. We're literally fifteen seconds away from what is the number-one transportation line into Boston, the Blue Line. We, we couldn't be located any better or something like that.
Can you silence the other things, thank you? I think, all right.
So, so pretty much just, just, just to wrap this up, I'd just like to reiterate that, uh, I love, uh, we, we love having Hector in the building, we want him to remain. Um, I think we're all in agreeance with that. Um, I just wanted to, to, to assure everybody that that, that is very much, uh, part of our, our future plans.
Okay, thank you, are there any other questions from the board?
Uh, Madam, Madam Chair, this is Javier, uh, is, I believe Tony Blaze is the attorney representing Hector Martinez?
He is.
If that's the case, I would suggest that to allow him to present testimony on behalf of Mr. Martinez.
Okay, all right, let's hear from Mr. Blaze and then we can proceed. Tony?
I just asked.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Now, now we can hear him, yes.
Yes, so, uh, good morning again, uh, uh, Madam Chairman of the Board. In any event, I have been talking to Attorney Drago, uh, but I have to say that I have been requesting a lease on behalf of Mr. Martinez over the last several months since the last meeting. I was sent a lease just about a week or two ago, which actually contained a provision for a one-year lease. This is inconsistent with the testimony that Mr. Hector, uh, is wanted on the property. If Mr. Hector, if there was some good faith in wanting Mr. Hector, Mr. Martinez on the property, sorry, I believe that the lease would be at least that with three years. Uh, a one-year lease was sent over, after some negotiations, it went up to a three-year lease. But even a three, three-year lease, considering the nature of Mr. Martinez's business, does not make any kind of economic or financial sense. Uh, as you've heard from the several, uh, people who live in the community, uh, he provides an indispensable service to the marginalized peoples in that community. Actually, the elderly, the sick, the closest supermarket is several thousand meters away or miles away. And this has been a fixture, or the store has been a fixture in the community for a significant period of time. I mean, there's a real concern that when this project is approved, Mr. Hector, Mr. Martinez, sorry, I call him Hector because of the familiarity of the first name, Mr. Martinez will in fact be kicked out of the property at the end of any lease period. If in fact the developer wants to maintain him on the property, why not give him a five-year lease with two consecutive five-year options? This is a normal, standard commercial lease, I've worked on several of those leases over the past, you know, dozens of years. I am in touch with Attorney Drago, I believe that will come to some kind of consensus, but I am afraid that if the project is approved at this stage, I think what we're going to have is a community where a significant benefit has just been pulled from, uh, down under. So I believe that we'll reach some kind of consensus, myself and Attorney Drago, we've been working at it. But let us have a lease that is agreeable by both parties, and if there's this level of mutual trust, then I believe that both parties can move along with the security that, you know, their interests, their mutual and, you know, respective interests have been met, and Mr. Martinez's primary interest is having a long-term lease. The community wants him there, Mr. Walsh wants him there, so that should not be too difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Blaze, I, I think we understand your point, uh, is there a response, Mr. Drago, before we proceed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and it is true, I'm, I'm working with Attorney Blaze, however, we did just send him again, uh, and I have documentation of that and an email form, that it was a three-year lease with, uh, an option, and I don't wanna get too, too into the legal details, but an, an additional two years, which have brought it up to five, uh, and, and we're open to, to, to working with Mr. Martinez, but, um, again, this is a, a, a sort of a, a legal issue. We did send this lease out, um, more than a month ago, and my client gave a copy of the lease, because I was afraid, uh, that this would happen at the eleventh hour, to, uh, Mr. Martinez directly as well, to pass along to his attorney, um, just so we could have an open communication. Um, we would be more than happy to continue to work with him, to get something memorialized, um, to have some kind of a proviso that we continue to work with him. But I am on the record, uh, I have documentation that shows we have mentioned a five-year lease is no problem for us. And just to point out, we are at about half-market-grade rent, and my client lowered, uh, the rent because he wants to keep Mr. Martinez. And right now, um, prior to my client on the building, Mr. Martinez has been under a tenancy at will, so, um, you know, if someone else was to purchase the building, he could be in jeopardy aside from this whole, um, development, having this. Having this development go forward with a locked-in lease would only protect him, whether that's for five years.
Thank you, okay. I don't want back and forth between you guys.
Just add a small comment, just add a small comment.
Briefly, please.
Very, very briefly. With respect to Mr. Martinez being on the property without a lease, actually, the owner of the property had promised to sell the property over to him, but he passed. And of course, whoever inherited the property did otherwise. And again, I have to mention that the lease that I was sent two weeks ago started with a one-year lease. So how is this consistent with wanting Mr. Martinez on the property for a significant period of time? It started with one year until we raised objections and issues. I actually proposed a three-year lease and two consecutive three-year leases to which Mr. Martinez...
Okay, I'm going to stop you both here because, you know, we're not here to mediate your legal negotiations. We appreciate the context. Are there any other questions from the board? If this is sufficient information, can someone put forth a motion? And feel free to proviso it up if it's helpful.
Madam Chair, I, my position is to do development in the city of Boston without displacement, and I'm going to put forward a motion, which is a motion of deferral to allow for parties to come before us with conviction that they have negotiated some good terms in good faith. But currently, I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing different opinions. And with that, in this deferral, it will also give the opportunity for the City of Boston Zoning Board to provide an interpreter at that hearing. So that's my motion, a motion of deferral.
Is there a second?
I was going to make this in motion, so yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The deferral day, it's up to...
I think a month from now.
A month of...
Yep, a month should be, if both parties really want to come to some terms, a month should be sufficient.
We could do October 17th. That's the next full board hearing. It's a few more days on a month, but October 17th would be the next closest one.
Okay.
Okay, okay. With motion and a second, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. We'll hope for...
Thank you.
Yep, see you next month.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all the proponents, attorneys, and elected officials. If anybody needs or requests interpretation, the website from the CBI or the ISD has three options for people to request interpretation. There is an online form that people can fill out forty-eight hours before the hearing. There is a phone number to call, or there is an email to call the ambassador, to contact the ambassador and request interpretation because that is a right that everybody has. So just ensure that your clients or community members know that there is interpretation, and there are three ways to request it at least forty-eight hours in advance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm not sure if that's a motion to do that really quick just so that it also on, that speaks Spanish. I didn't want to hear that in a different language.
I'm sorry, Jessica, can I hear you?
I think Ms. Thomas is asking if you want to speak.
Oh, que todos los, si lo puedes mencionar en español.
Por supuesto.
But thank you.
Todos los miembros de la comunidad de Boston tienen el derecho de participar. No importa el idioma que hablan. Si quieren traducción o interpretación en cualquier idioma, hay tres opciones de hacerlo. En la página web de ISD o del Zoning Board, hay un teléfono para llamar, hay una forma en línea que pueden llenar, o también hay un email para la señora embajadora del Zoning Board que pueden contactar por lo menos cuarenta y ocho horas antes de la audiencia para que utilicen este servicio y su voz sea escuchada.
Thank you, Mr. Valencia and Ms. Better Barazza. Appreciate it. Okay, let's proceed.
Case BOA 1482748, the address of 247 Shamaad. It's the applicant and/or their representative president, who explains.
Hi, Peter, you're on mute. You can unmute yourself. I just made him a panelist, so he's just on. Oh, you're muted, but we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Hey, is there anyone to present on 247 Shamaad?
Issues with the audio. There's another hand that was raised, going to Mada.
Lou?
Mada, yeah, you're here to give, to go over the proposal?
I see Mr. Vanderweil, are you presenting on this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can now hear you.
Oh, sorry about that. Hello, I'm Pete Vanderweil, and I am the general contractor during the permitting on behalf of the homeowner. What we have here is the, this is on Shamaad from the south end. And if you could scroll up just a little bit so we can see this part, yep, right there, that's perfect, okay. So here's the subject property on Shamaad. The homeowner has a top floor where there's currently a small fire balcony deck off of the back that faces the rear of the project. And they are proposing to dormer out that area so the space inside is more inhabitable for one of their family members who's living in there. It's a sloped roof right now that basically renders half of the floor sort of unusable because of the slope of the roof, and they would like to dormer out to provide adequate space where there's currently a bedroom area there that's being used by a family member. So the area of the proposed dormer is right here. It's within the footprint of the current property, would not extend out beyond the rear wall, but we were required to get relief, so that's why we're here.
Great, any questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Oh, I would like to add just quickly. We did, I can't see if Kim Cruzioli's on the call, but...
She is, and she is, both speak to community process.
Okay, yeah, we did get a few letters that I've submitted to Kim, and we did not get any opposition.
Thank you. With that, is our neighborhood liaison on? I saw you a minute ago.
Yes, hi. I'm sorry for the video. For some reason, I can't get it to work. But good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Kim Cruzioli from the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to defer to the board on this matter. Our office held in a Butters meeting in July where all concerns were addressed by the applicant. They also went before the Eighth Streets Neighborhood Association, where they also received non-opposition. And our office has also received four letters of non-opposition for the Butters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ana Callejon from Council President Fling's office. The councilor would like to go on recording support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Mada? I sent a request, are you looking to give testimony? No, okay.
No testimony.
Okay, thanks, I have no additional raised hands, thanks.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd put for a motion of approval with the proviso that the plans be reviewed by the Department of Parks and Recreation and by the Boston Landmarks Commission.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yep.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1513036, with the address of 25 Coldbrook Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative president, who explains.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is William, first department architect with 686 Architects. We're the architects with the projects for the Thor family in South Boston. What we propose, the proposal we have before you today is to construct on top of an existing foundation that has existed for a number of years, a single-family house of those are the world worlds. Those are the world worlds. These are our old presentation, the new drawings were resubmitted to be re-reviewed after the last hearing mix-up. It's a three-story building now. Would you like us to proceed, Madam?
Javier, what do you recommend?
When did you submit the latest drawings?
We knew at this level at the last hearing, you had said that this was an ERT, not ALT. And we submitted everything, and everything went forward. We worked with everybody at ISD to include Ed Goldberg, Sean...
Right, you said the plans were changed. When did you submit the plans? Because right now, I think that's all we have so far.
That's not, that's not, it had to be resubmitted after the hearing because we noticed then.
Right, when did you send us those plans after the hearing?
I think he needs a date so they can try to look for it. Might I suggest we move forward to give a chance to look for the correct ones, and then we can hopefully turn back to it?
Yeah, I just want to let you know that the plans that I have are the ones that I'm seeing on the screen. So the plans would have to be reviewed on site.
We could defer to September 26th, which is the next hearing, to review the plans. Unfortunately, if it's anything submitted prior to today or of today, we wouldn't be able to share it with the board.
It was submitted on 8/10.
I'll ask Stephanie if she received those, but right now, I think these are the only plans that they have presented. Cam's double-checking now.
All right. Why don't we take a fifteen-minute break right now for them to deal with this, and we'll reconvene? Is that...
That sounds good, Madam Chair.
All right, taking a break. See you back in fifteen.